Hello, I'm James Mallory. I'm chairman of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners. And on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, I'd like to provide to you an update on November 17th, 2020, on our status with COVID-19. As of today, we have 4,811 confirmed tested positive cases to date in Iredal County of COVID-19. We have 23 individuals who are currently hospitalized, and sadly, we've had 52 folks that have passed as a result of this infection. To give you a breakout geographically in the county, in our three different areas, in the northern area, north of Interstate 40, we have 21% of our population and 20% based on a per capita analysis is the infection rate. In the center part of the county, which represents 34% of our population, we have a higher infection rate of 40%. And in the southern part of the county, where we have a larger number of people, 45%, we have a 40% rate. That's 1,916 in the south, 1,921 in the central part, and 974 in the northern area. Looking at our cases to date, from the inception of when we started keeping records, on a per capita basis, per 10,000 residents, you can see that Iredal County has done very well in relation to the counties that surround us in the Charlotte metro area. Only one county, Davie County, has a lower total number of cases. And all of our surrounding counties have a rather significantly higher number. But we have to be concerned about where we're going now and not where we've been. If you look at the weekly average of COVID cases in the county, we were bouncing around and you could see, we started out less than 10 in the summer months, particularly in July. We got up as high as 46. We started driving that down, August through September, and in October, we crept up a little to around 40 average. But then, in the last three weeks, we've gone from 38 cases average to 51 cases to 62 cases, and this last week, we rocketed up to 94 cases. That's about two and a half times increase in the number of cases. And this is an all hands on deck moment. We need to all focus on our own individual behavior, our family's behavior, our workplace behavior, our behavior in social settings, all focusing on trying to limit the spread. What we know is that hospitalization rates, which have hit as high as 30 to 31 on a daily count, but never higher than that, currently are at 23. But we know that two weeks, that's a lagging indicator, in two weeks after the numbers come in, you're going to see a corresponding increase or decrease in the hospitalization rate. So our hospitals are no doubt going to be stressed in the next two to three weeks as they're dealing with folks that have more severe cases of COVID-19. The weekly average of hospitalizations, as I was just mentioning, has peaked around 29 average a week ago and dropped a little bit down to 27. But I anticipate that that's going to go up, just based on the numbers of cases. The number of cases statewide have been hitting record highs in excess of 3,000 per day, and the hospitalizations statewide have exceeded 1,500. And that is an order of magnitude of about 400 more than the caseload of around 1,100 to 1,200 was bouncing around for several months. So this is not a phenomenon that is limited to Iredal County. And you know, as I'm sure you've watched, nationally, where we were three to four weeks ago looking at daily counts of 40,000 to 50,000 and inching up, have skyrocketed to in excess of 170, almost 180,000 per day. So while we are not in a runaway train at this point, like some communities are, we can see the writing on the wall, and we need to hit the brakes. Governor Cooper, just today, had a, shared in his video with the state, his new plan to try to slow this train down. And what he's come up with, along with his staff and the Health Department, is a county alert system, where they are evaluating individual counties based on three criteria. And they're going to be looking at the number of new cases in the last 14 days, per capita out of 100,000. They're going to be looking at the percent positive tests over the last 14 days, and they're going to be looking at the impact on hospitals. We don't have the visibility on all the metrics in terms of our hospitals. We know the gross count, but we really are not aware of some of the more specific criteria that the state is looking at. But what the state has done is come up with three different categories, a red, orange, and yellow category. Yellow stands for a significant community spread, orange is substantial community spread, and red is a critical community spread. And they have laid out metrics to determine where counties fall in that scheme. And Iredal County, based on what's happened in the last three weeks, basically, is in the orange category. Three weeks ago, if you took these metrics, it's clear we would be in a yellow category. But we've had a significant uptick. Why? Well, we had Halloween, we had Halloween parties, we had fall festivals. There are a lot of activity around that time of year. We've had a general election with early voting and Election Day. So there have been a number of events that have occurred. But we've got events coming up. We've got Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, Christmas, New Years, all of which are focused on families traveling and getting together, as we've done for many, many years. This year is just going to have to be different. I would ask everyone to listen to Meghan's suggestions from our Health Department, who has got another video cut today that provides some suggestions on how to have a safe holiday gathering, limiting the size to smaller family gatherings. I can tell you personally, we would normally have 24, 25 folks over to my house. This year, I think that we're going to top out maybe at six, and it could be four, or it could be two. We've left it up to our family members to make decisions on their own nuclear family situation, and whether or not they felt comfortable about meeting with other family members that they didn't necessarily know who their social circles were. And I've got a lot of family, kids, that are involved in healthcare, and they have to be very careful. And if you have children in daycare, you have to be very careful, because if one of them comes down with it, that impacts their ability to go to work. And so they're all being very cautious. And although I hate not being able to see all of them at one time, that doesn't mean that we can't hit the road and sequentially visit in smaller groups and maintain the appropriate masking and social distancing. So this county alert system, there'll be more information out, disseminated on our website. But essentially, depending on the category that you fall in as a county, there are certain recommendations that Governor Cooper and his staff are suggesting. These are not mandatory, they are suggestions. But if you can read the handwriting on the wall, you can see a number of different states that have gone into reverse and started to go in various forms of lockdowns. I believe that Governor Cooper wants to avoid that. But if the numbers go in the wrong direction and are significant enough, my guess is that we'll start to go in reverse and go from Phase 3 back to Phase 2 with the greater limitations, and suggestions may become mandates. So what we do now is critically important in terms of our ability to maintain our freedom of action and our ability to, you know, keep our economy and our livelihoods on track. We have testing, critical part of this is testing. One of the suggestions Meghan had was to get a test before Thanksgiving, so you can have that clean bill of health. We have a community testing program. The schedule is shared with you on the viewing screen, and it's conducted six days a week, except for Thanksgiving and Sundays. And I would strongly recommend that you avail yourself of this free opportunity to get the gold standard of tests, a PCR test. This is not a rapid result test, which has a higher false positive, a higher false negative result. If you have COVID, the rapid antigen test will definitely disclose it. But it's possible that you have COVID and it won't disclose it. So the PCR test takes a couple days to turn around and get the results back to you, and you're notified by text or by telephone, whatever you've chosen, and you can get a quick readout on how you're doing. And these tests are offered, as I said, free of charge. You can log on, you can provide the information ahead of time to get your medical necessity to have the test done and have some peace of mind. Okay, so, one thing about masks, I'd like to say, is remember, masking is important to protect other people, and as we have discovered over time, masking also provides some protections for the individuals that are wearing it. But that level of protection really varies based on the type of mask you're wearing. A lot of people you see have a gator that they'll pull up, that's a single layer of material. That is the least effective in terms of protecting yourself. The cloth masks, as I was wearing just a minute ago, this give you a little bit better, because most of the time, it's at least two layers of some kind of material. But it's still not great, maybe 20, 30%. Then, so depending on where you're going, what kind of environment that you're going to be in, what you want to do is minimize the viral load. If you're just walking around outside, you're walking through a store, you're not going to be there for a long period of time, it's fairly open, you know, cloth masks are fine. You're protecting the others, and you're protecting yourself from most, because you're able to maintain social distancing. But in those environments where you happen to go where, okay, those factors look a little different, maybe there, people are more crowded together, maybe it's a smaller venue, maybe you're going to be there for a much longer period of time. This virus is transmitted in the air, it's not just droplets, but it could also be aerosolized, it can float around for a while. So if you wear a standard surgical mask, you can get even better protection. If you want the gold standard of protection, then you wear a KN-95. This is a workplace rated mask for 95% of viral elimination. It is not an N-95, which is used by health professionals and has to be fitted, but this provides you the very best protection that you can have. So depending on the threat level of the environment that you're operating in, consider which type of mask is going to be best for you. You know, when I first started sharing this information with all of you, back March 27th, I basically said that, you know, we're all soldiers in the Iredal County Army. We're all in this fight, individually, corporately, as families, as communities, as churches, as businesses. We all need to do our part. And as I mentioned to you, if you want to go back and listen, I don't plan on going through it again, but I also likened the process that we were going to go through, keying off President Trump's words, that we're in a war against an invisible enemy, that it was not unlike World War II European campaign following the landings on D-Day culminating in the fall of Nazi Germany, as we moved from France into Germany proper. One of the things I mentioned was that after initially fighting this virus, that it was possible that we could be counterattacked. And I talked about the likelihood, the extreme possibility of a second surge in the fall, which follows the same pattern as the 1918 Spanish flu pandemic. And hopefully, we wouldn't experience that. Unfortunately, we are. If you look at that World War II scenario as a comparison, in December of 1944, the lines had fairly stabilized. We were not across the Rhine River, but through Belgium and eastern France, there was a line of contact with the Germans, and things were sort of slowing down. We were continuing to move with a couple of major offensives to try to reach the Rhine, but in the main, there was a center section of that entire line of contact that was very quiet. It was opposite the Ardennes Forest, and that's an area that is perceived to be impenetrable. Now, the Germans attacked through the Ardennes Forest in 1940 and overwhelmed the French, who had not thought that this was going to be an area that any threat would be able to penetrate. Well, they did. We fell into the same trap. We didn't think that this was going to be a place that the Germans would attack. So we had relatively green divisions in that area, or lightly equipped divisions, not our armored divisions. On December 16th, the Germans mounted a massive counterattack, leading to what is called the Battle of the Bulge. And they, their idea was to push all the way to the English Channel. But as they created this bulge, and on December 16th, when they attacked, Europe was experiencing terrible weather, some of the coldest weather they had experienced in December, and there was cloud cover that kept our airplanes from being able to control the airspace. So they were able to attack without warning. Our intelligence didn't pick up on it. We'd been reading all of their intelligence codes the entire war, and this was a time when they didn't put their instructions to their troops in code, so we didn't read them. So we were completely blindsided. There was one small town called Bastogne, in the center of the bulge, where several roads came together, and that was a critical junction that the Germans needed to control to be able to move men and materiel forward to create that offensive punch, to be able to punch through to the English Channel. Well, we had one small group of soldiers there, 101st Airborne Division. And those of you who may have watched the HBO series Band of Brothers know something about Easy Company of the 506 Parachute Infantry Regiment of the 101st Airborne Division. If you turn on, I forget which episode it is, I think Episode 6, that's the, it's entitled Bastogne. And it tells the story of the 101st Airborne and the other troops that happened to be in Bastogne, that were completely surrounded. And they put everyone in the line. They put cooks in the line, they put logisticians in the line, in addition to the infantry. And the Germans attacked over and over again, and did not penetrate that line. It was freezing weather, troops were experiencing frostbite, trench foot, and in that line, they basically dug their foxholes. And you know, foxholes are important if you're in the defense, it provides cover and it provides concealment. If you're out and about, and you've got a determinemity trying to break through your lines, if you can be seen, you can be hit. You can be, there can be a sniper, there could be just a machine gun nest taking you out, or there could be artillery, which killed most people. Now, that's a great episode to watch, because what you saw was a medic going from foxhole to foxhole, tending to those soldiers who were in the front lines. And the, and what he saw in having to transport those that were wounded back to the hospital. But the more that are wounded, the less that can be in the front line. So there were lots of soldiers that stayed in the front line despite being wounded. So that reminded me very much of our healthcare workers, who are out there tending to us day in and day out for the last eight months, and they're being worn down. This is, this is physically and mentally and emotionally exhausting work. And you could see it in the, in the, in this medic, who is having to go around tend to At the end of the day, those soldiers held the line. Around Christmas, the cloud cover cleared, and the American Air Force and the Allied Air Forces were able to drop in airdrop supplies, they were able to interdict German lines of communication and other units. So to me, that clearing of the skies is what we've experienced in terms of therapeutics that we've gotten to deal with this virus, remdesivir, other therapeutics that are going to enable folks to be able to, if they're hospitalized, be able to keep the disease from progressing and be able to get out alive or to have a shorter stay. So that didn't mean that they weren't still surrounded. They were still being attacked, but they had some hope. They got some ammo, they got medical supplies, they got winter gear that they didn't have at the time. So tremendous boost, but they're still under threat. And that's like we are. The therapeutics don't prevent this disease, they ameliorate its effects. But what happened, what was the relief of Bastogne, was engineered by General George S. Patton in the 3rd United States Army. His 3rd Army was south of Bastogne by 150 miles, and was engaged in an eastward offensive to try to reach the Rhine River. The 3rd Army pulled out of contact and did a 90-degree turn on its axis to the north to march to the relief of Bastogne and the pushing back of the southern portion of the bulge. They couldn't just get to Bastogne, that's not good enough, they had to first fight their way through German lines that had moved far beyond Bastogne. So if you can imagine, those folks in Bastogne, they're now getting some airdrop supplies, but they're still surrounded, but they know, they hear, Patton's on his way. And for thus, that's the vaccines that are being developed and fielded even now. And even though there are multiple vaccines, only one or two or three are going to be in that first group, leading the column of that army of vaccines that are going to come into contact with the enemy. And those vaccines, hopefully, will be approved and be able to be distributed beginning in, we'll say, sometime in December. But those vaccines are going to go to folks based on a priority distribution, first to our medical and healthcare professionals and first responders who are constantly in contact, doing the jobs they need to do, and come in contact with the disease through the course of their employment and their jobs. Then there'll be another priority distribution scheme, probably focusing on the most vulnerable populations, whether that's folks in nursing homes, or just generally over a certain age, or who have certain medical conditions that make them most likely to have, to succumb to this disease. So, and a complicating factor in these vaccines that have been developed, they're all, the two from Moderna and Pfizer are from what's called messenger RNA. And it's a new way of developing, it doesn't mean injecting live virus, it means that they have been able to accelerate the process of, basically, developing these vaccines, because they're using computer technologies. And what they'll be able to do is field it faster than typically done in the other types of vaccines, where they actually may inject some kind of weakened form of the virus. But the results in terms of effectiveness are astonishing. They were thinking maybe 50, 60, 70% effectiveness, and these vaccines are proving to be 90% to 94% effective. So it's, that's a great news story, and we can take heart in that. But just like Patton's 3rd Army, it's not going to be here tomorrow. It's going to take months for them to be fully online, to relieve us, so we can get back to normal. Sometime in the spring, you can expect widespread availability. It's going to be difficult to logistically distribute these vaccines. The Pfizer vaccine has to be stored in an extreme cold temperature, and it will be difficult to get those out to a lot of rural counties in the United States. I don't anticipate it's going to be a problem getting, having those vaccines available in Iredal County in terms of our ability to deliver them. The Moderna vaccine, sounds like you can store it at more like refrigerator-type temperatures, and that will be fine. But it's a complex logistical process, and both these vaccines require two shots. Moderna, three weeks apart, Pfizer, four weeks apart. So our Health Department will be sharing all the information that you will need to be able to choose which vaccines are going to make sense for you, and it's, we suspect that there'll be a number of different options available. So, we need everybody to get into their fighting position, and to be in the line actively engaged. And how do you do that? The same thing we've been talking about. It's wearing a mask, maintaining social distancing, and washing your hands frequently. That's the equivalent of being in your fighting position and being ready to engage the enemy. If you're not doing those things, the corollary is that you're not in a fighting position, you don't have cover and concealment, you're sort of wandering around the battlefield. And if you can be seen, you can be hit. And so if you're congregating- And so if you're congregating particularly, that's, makes the perfect target for an artillery round. So don't be a casualty. And if you are a casualty, and it's a light case, you can stay in the fight. You don't have to be medevac to the hospital. So let's all protect ourselves, protect our families, and protect our neighbors. Our schools have done a good job of being able to provide instruction while at the same time limiting spread. We haven't had, for Iredal Stateful Schools, for instance, no more than 3% of their faculty and staff has been, have come down with COVID. Inside the schools, you have a very strong regimen of protected mask-wearing and social distancing. The problem is what children or what faculty do outside the school, in the community, because the community spread is what gets brought into a school. So right now, we are continuing to march with normal school hours for K through 5, and a hybrid in ISS for 6 through 12, or 6 through 12. I believe that Moore's Will Graded has gone to 100% virtual right now. We're just all going to have to roll the flow here, with some good nature, and just hunkering down and doing what we need to do. We don't have to do this for, but for another four months. Once we have a vaccine, you still need to wear a mask. Once that vaccine has taken root in the majority of our population, you know, if we can get 80% of our population vaccinated, then we're going to be back to normal. And so please stay tuned to information as it comes available. None of this is political. I told you before, in September, that this was going to be around after November the 3rd, and lots of people felt that it wouldn't be, that this was all some kind of a conspiracy, made-up hoax. It's not. People are dying in hospitals still thinking it's a hoax. It's their last dying breath. This, this isn't happening to me. Don't let it happen to you. So, without anything further, wish you good luck, Godspeed, have a wonderful, safe Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, Christmas, and New Years.